Good afternoon, everybody. As I mentioned earlier, this is our open-mic night here at the City Council. If you haven't done so, you need to turn in your open microphone speaker card to speak to council. You'll be given three minutes to do so. Before we get this meeting started, I do want to remind the public of the fact that First National Bank is going to be celebrating its 125th anniversary on June 15th with a street dance. And I want to encourage you to support our First National Bank. 125 years in business in any community is a milestone, and I think it bodes well for the City of Granberry to help celebrate that. June 23rd, I want to mention that at the historic courthouse, we'll see 1776, the musical Start Production. That's being brought to us by Andrew Barris and the Granberry Theater Company. And it's more of a fundraiser and a community effort to show our patriotic support during the Fourth of July season. So, please check out their website for that. We're going to get this meeting started. This is our City Council meeting. This is June 5th, 2012. We're located here in City Hall. And at this time, I'd like to ask everybody to rise for the invocation, which will be led by Pastor Dean Porter with Lake Granberry Christian Temple. Pastor?
Father God, we thank you for this opportunity tonight to be together and to speak what's on our minds and our hearts. We just thank you for a city that we can be proud of, Lord, and for a council that we're proud of. We thank you, Lord, that everything that we need for the wisdom and the knowledge and the direction that we need to take, you're fully aware and able to provide that for us. Most of all, we thank you for the peace that follows that. Guide and direct this council meeting. We give you all the glory and praise for every good thing, in Jesus' name. Amen.
And now, if you would, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, please.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. Well, in case you haven't noticed, there's a lot of yellow and green shirts out there. Granberry Citizens Police Academy alumni is here to present the city with a check. And it represents the total number of volunteer man-hours that they've worked this past year. Mr. Cox, I understand you're holding a copy of that check, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. And we've got a camera over this way, so it'll get us on live TV. We'll ask the council to come down and join them as well, please.
This is the volunteer hours that I'm not supposed to put in last year at City Granberry and put in the morning parade, Memorial Day parade, the Granberry parade, and the senior community department, which is...
Graduates.
New graduates are in the green shirts, and we will have them in yellow shirts coming the Fourth of July to help us out. This represents $21,485.25 of time. It's 1,061 hours at $20.25, which is some kind of government number. But what we do is we raise money for the police department. We just bought them, I'll let you hold that, flashlights this year. This was the old flashlight that they used out in the middle of the night, and this is the new one. Does that get your attention or what? Somehow, you can push a button and it strobes too, so that's, they can do the sobriety test or whatever they need to do. And we're having our fundraiser next Tuesday. And that will be Tuesday, the 12th, and that will be at Grumps. And that will be, the police officers will be serving you, and you will then have an opportunity to tip a cop, which is our biggest fundraiser of the year, and we have some flyers we want to put in the hand of the mayor. And these, by the way, these tip-a-cop flyers were designed by Granberry High School kids. And these are the top three in that group that we have, and we're going to be distributing over the next week. And we certainly hope that you will come out and have us raise money for the police department.
Well, it's always a nice pleasure to receive this check. Even though it's a symbolic check, it does mean a lot to the city. I mean, you guys are doing a great job, especially during the parades. And you know, we have quite a few outdoor events. So, thank you very much. On behalf of the city, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're now going to switch gears, and we're going to go towards the open microphone session of the City Council meeting. During open-mic, you have three minutes to speak to councils. Council will not be able to respond to anything that's stated, but you do have three minutes to talk. And we have one speaker card that's been turned in. Mr. Tom Baker, if you would, once you get up to the podium, state your name and your address, and we'll start a clock. Only after you state your name and your address, giving you plenty of time to walk. Yeah.
Okay, after four minutes, Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. Thank you for the opportunity to have the open-mic again. I'd like to thank the city for the help they gave HGMA and the city in general for the help around the square and such, for Memorial Day Parade and more Memorial Day festivities on the square. Also, I saw today they are putting the, or fixing the lights on the roof. So, that, I don't even think anybody asked to have that done, but it's good to see all those worn-out light bulbs being replaced. My main focus tonight is to particularly point out that Granberry Area Bed and Breakfast Association has selected a representative for the newly-formed Tourism Advisory Board. And we want to point out that Kay Weschlesky from Granberry Gardens Bed and Breakfast was elected at our April meeting to be our representative on that board. And also, Scott Young could not be here tonight from Historic Granberry Merchants Association. He also was elected by the Board of Merchants Association for our representative to the Tourism Advisory Board. I'm the president of the GAB and on the Board of HGMA, so in that respect, I'm representing both of those to make that announcement. We're really excited to have the Tourism Advisory Board back again. Shannon's been around only a few months, working her self-to-the-bone and such, but we certainly want to give her as much support and our limited advice that we can to make things happen better, quicker, and easier with the Tourism Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. It's going to bring us to our, we'll end the open-mic session, moving on to the consent agenda. Council members, you were presented with the council minutes from May 15th of 2012. Entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion regarding those minutes? Any corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Moving on to deliberation, item number one. We'll open items number one and two at the same time, gentlemen. Item number one, consider and adopt a resolution whereby the City of Granberry desires to consent to Aqua Texas inclusion of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Peak Plaza addition, being a 4.125 acre tract of the Stephen P. Bumpus and Geraldine W. Bumpus, recorded in Volume 1477, page 425, and Volume 1777, page 487, of the real property records of Hood County, Texas, within its service area to serve the site, which is contained within the city's ETJ or extraterritorial jurisdiction. At the same time, we're going to open a public hearing regarding, it's basically a reopening of a public hearing regarding a request of DRECO investments LLC to Final Platt, a 4.125 acre tract of the Thomas Price Survey Abstract Number 439, as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Peak Plaza addition, and consider approval of said Final Platt. Moving back up to item number one, this is, one of the restrictions that was placed upon the Final Platt was that, there were actually two restrictions for putting that off. It was a conditional denial of the Final Platt. One of them was based upon a CCN issue with the Texas, let me make sure I get the word, Aqua Texas, which is serving water to the property. They have sent a letter to Mr. Bumpus, and they have also replied to a request by the city to write an agreement, basically, that stated that the city would, if it ever so chose to annex this property, that they would revert any rights to the water on that property. Scott, please go into better detail as to what that aspect of this whole thing was about.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and dive off on the Platt first. As you mentioned, two conditions placed on the Platt for conditional denial. The first of which, that the developer escrow funds for the city, funds to the city for the escrow of three streetlights to be placed about the access points within the subject property. We did receive a memorandum from United Co-op saying that they would incur the cost for the installation, provided that the developer paid for the monthly operation of those streetlights. That particular condition has been met, so we can strike that one off. We don't need to act on that anymore. There was a second condition, that there's a resolution with the accompanying agreement that the Aqua Texas be allowed to serve the site within Granberry's ETJ as part of the state requirements. And Stuart may want to go into the state requirements a little further down the line. But with respect to the two conditions placed on the Platt, it appears that the first has been met, the second of which is not really applicable after research by Alva and looking at the distinction between an IOU, independent-owned utility, and a district to serve the site. What's being applied to is Aqua Texas as an IOU. So, before this Platt expires, when we acted on this Platt, it was December 6th. Every time we do a conditional denial, it's good for six months. The term out date is tomorrow. So, we wanted to actually put this back before council to unhinge those two conditions, so the gentleman can go forward, file a Platt, and do the development on this property. That's the statement I have on the Platt with the variances and the conditions. Stuart may want to add something with respect to item number one.
Yeah, if you would, Stuart, please enlighten the council as to the resolution issue that we've got before us as item one.
If you remember back in December when this property came before the council the first time, Alva, our Public Works Director, made comment that he would be able to secure an agreement from Aqua Texas, saying that if we were to ever annex that property, they would not object the annexation, they would consent to and allow us to do so. Alva was unable to secure that agreement, for whatever reason Aqua Texas said they don't want to sign it. So, then we came back and we started looking at the Platt because we didn't have that agreement, and it was a requirement on the Platt. The gentleman was not able to file that Platt. So, we had to decide as at the staff level, at what point do we want to bring it back to council and allow the council to act on it? The resolution you have in front of you allows and consents to Aqua Texas to serve the property in the ETJ. And it's not in the city limits, but this particular property is in their water CCN, so that they have the right to serve the property, not the city. The distinction here is under the water code, if Aqua Texas was a mud district, like a mud is, then the city would not be able to annex through that portion of the district without purchasing that infrastructure, if you wanted to do so. Aqua Texas is not a mud district. They're an investor-owned utility, what we call an IOU. They're no different than any other corporation. So, I'm comfortable saying that the city can pass the resolution, unhinge the restriction on the Platt, allow Mr. Bumpus to file the Platt, proceed with the development of the property, because if we were to annex that piece of property in the future, being it being in the ETJ, we would only need to be assured that Aqua Texas has the capacity to serve the area adequately with the water. And you see on the screen here, the letter from Aqua Texas saying that they do have sufficient capacity. And so, if we were to annex the property in the future, and there's no plans to do that now, but if we were to do that in the future, in the service plan, we would just make sure that we noted that Aqua Texas was the water service provider. So, you can see the letter here. I'm comfortable with the resolution. I'm comfortable with the taking that restriction off the Platt and allowing the property to develop.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the item of the resolution, first off? That's the first thing we'll cover here. Council members, any questions for council or for staff regarding that?
Are you going to close the public hearing? We're going to vote on this in a separate round.
Resolution is not a public hearing, so we're going to determine the resolution at this point first, then we'll move on to the closing the public hearings. So, at this time, I'll consider adopting the resolution. I need a motion, though, to adopt the resolution. So, we have a motion by Mr. Tyra. Need a second from Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding the resolution? This time, we'll take a vote. All in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This time, anybody in the public want to speak on this particular item? We do have a public hearing open. Nobody coming forward. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Entertain a motion to approve the Final Platt as submitted with no conditions. This is a Platt of a 4.125 acre tract of the Thomas Price Survey, Abstract Number 439, as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Peak Plaza addition. Entertaining a motion. Mr. Allen makes the motion. Second from Mr. Parsons. Any discussion regarding this? All in favor of approving said Final Platt, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Takes us on to item number three. At this time, we'll entertain a request of Harold Price to preliminary Platt, a 10.3367 acre tract of the Mylum County School Land Survey, Abstract Number 348, as lots 1 through 5, Block 1 of the Harold Price addition. The property is located approximately 800 feet west of the intersection of Highway 377 West and Holmes Drive. At this time, we're going to open a public hearing regarding this preliminary Platt. Scott, if you would, please fill us in on what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a piece of property. It's shown delineated and bordered in light blue. It's located just to the west of Holmes Road, just to the east of the development or the area, large acreage of a lot of land called Knox Ranch. What's being presented is that area that's mounted in blue to be platted out, proposed to be platted out, in a preliminary concept Platt as five lots. You can see lots 1 through 3 running US 377, lots 4 and 5. You can see the phase line, the mizing line, which is south of that. Lot 4 is the larger area, and Lot 5 is a thinner area that backs up to the south. In fact, I've got, I've got some handouts of some Platts that I'll give you, maybe a So, in essence, we have a preliminary Platt showing five lots with a phase line, the three front lots along 377 in the first phase, the second phase lots being 4 and 5. There is no level of immediacy on developing lots 4 and 5. Lot 5 does have a wireless tower lease arrangement on it for an ATT tower. There is a, there will be a filed separate instrument for ingress egress to maintain the tower for the contractors to work on the tower if need be. We have variances associated with the Platt application. Five variances are tied to the Platt. Two points of discussion were really deliberated on at P&amp;Z. First and foremost are the variances to water and sewer respectively. That's 39 and 45 and 46. There was a great level of discussion regarding whether or not to have the developer escrow the money to have the minimum eight-inch line size requirement through the frontage along 377 escrowed immediately to the city. And what perpetuated this discussion was the most recent developments that we had or discussions we had at P&amp;Z regarding Knox Ranch to the west and Belatera, which we saw about a month ago to the east. Belatera is about, I'd say, 380 feet away on Holmes Road. Their proposed preliminary Platt actually showed continuation connection points to the westernmost part of Belatera subdivision, which would, could be tied on to and extended through the frontage here. And then, of course, we're working in earnest with the developer for Knox Ranch, and they're showing proposed water and sewer along frontage along 377 as well. So, that's why you see the report. You have in your report a letter from the city engineer stating that she'll support the variance, provided that the developer escrow money for the water and sewer as a part of filing the Final Platt. P&amp;Z was a little, used a little softer glove and said, no, what we want to do in this instance is punt a little bit and ask council whether or not they want the money up front immediately, if the developer is going to do this, or any one of these developments are going to transpire within the next two years, or have the note on the Platt if it's going to be longer than a couple of years, because they didn't want the city holding the money. So, they actually supported the variance, provided that the council make the determination on either having the developer escrow the money or having the note on the Platt and the city getting it at a later date. So, that's the first two variances. We have a variance to Section 31E and 410 to not improve Highway 377 to an urban standard street. They supported that variance. We have a variance to 36A4 to not extend a commercial sidewalk. Will be a note placed on the Platt, which is our usual standard. We have a variance to Section 48 to not provide streetlights along the public right-of-way. P&amp;Z approved that. And the second point of discussion was the variance request of 35 regarding proposed lots 4 and 5. Our subdivision ordinance requires a minimum amount of 35-foot of frontage along a duly-dedicated public street. Lots 4 and 5, in essence, are not platted to a dedicated public street. In essence, they're landlocked. What the developer and the surveyor is proposing is to provide a easement, ingress egress easement or an access easement to that portion of those lots. Both, and this is in your packet as well, both the city engineer and fire inspector are recommending denial of the variance. They want to provide some workability on this. In essence, they're saying if Phase 1 is the short-term interest, then they can provide a 60-foot right-of-way dedication with no street improvements right now, develop those front three lots. But it still has the set aside for the commercial right-of-way width, and at such time 4 and 5 develops, they'll reassess it based on the proposed use at that time and either recommend vacating it or putting in a commercial street based on the proposed use for Phase 2. So, that, in essence, is the action on the variances.
And I will entertain any questions, should you have any. Counsel, do you have any questions for Scott regarding these items that P&amp;Z put as a conditional denial on the Platt?
Mayor, I got, I got a couple.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
On where the road's going there, Scott, what's the width of that lot right now with a 40-foot?
Uh, what's the width of the lot?
Yes.
Are you referring to Lot 3 or Lot 2?
Will it be Lot, Lot 3, I guess, yes, Lot 3. Are they going to take the 60 feet off of that, or?
It looks like what they were suggesting, well, I know the developer suggested that if we actually scoot it inward to the easternmost boundary of Lot 3, that it would cut into the building footprint a little too much. And I think both the fire inspector and the city engineer were suggesting that they center the right-of-way dedication to not impact one lot or the other too much.
All right. The next question is that we hear this a little bit about the 8-inch water line and sewer line. Where does it stop at right now?
It stops, if memory serves, it stops over by, just to the west of the TSC Building, the Tractor Supply Corporation Building.
Which, I'm sorry, Scott, which one?
Uh, the TSC, Tractor Supply.
Okay.
So, part of, and it's still substantially a good distance away, so what staff is thinking is the momentum and the urgency that the developer came through on Belatera will probably, possibly make this water line, you know, about 380 feet away. But, of course, that determination is based on another development.
I just talked to the gentleman that came before us to the Belatera, and he said their financing's helped through.
Okay.
Just found out the date. The other thing is, you mentioned Knox Ranch. Is that property further out by the loop on the left-hand side?
It is.
Now, have they already plotted out for houses and everything?
No, they have not. Though, we're still in the concept planning standpoint, and we still are working on a conceptual development or...
We know it's probably a couple, three, four years old. They've owned it for what, seven years?
The Knox Ranch? They may have started taking down pieces of property over the last four, maybe five years, but they don't, from what I understand, they still don't own it all.
They don't own it all. So, we're wanting to put a escrow money for something that may happen, what you think?
That's the, no, well, it's an option.
That's one option.
That's an option.
You could also just place the note onto the Platt as well, based upon recommendation from P&amp;Z.
Right. All right, thanks. I have a question.
All right, Mr. Tyra.
Thank you, thank you. I've had, I want to make a statement to my colleagues, but of course, I want to clarify a few things with Scott. So, Scott, when we look at the variances, there were six variances total, and the first two variances, one, the sewer main, the other one, the 8-inch water main. Am I correct? And I'm hearing you say that you've worked it out with the developer, and the developer has agreed to, if in fact, if we don't go with the escrow, they're willing to do that when it gets to them, if it's two years, if it's 20 years, with this agreement?
I haven't heard one way or the other whether or not the developer's comfortable with that. But I can tell you, I can tell you that's what came out of P&amp;Z.
Okay, so, we could ask the developer or the owner here tonight, if they're here in the public hearing, okay? Appreciate those two. Now, it looks like the approval on the not to in number 3, 31E and 4.10, they agreed not to improve Highway 377 to urban standard street. That's correct? That's been approved?
That's based on your final report. Both staff and, staff, the city engineer, and P&amp;Z are recommending approval.
And it looks like you've taken care of the sidewalk issue at 366A4, and then the streetlights, so.
Right.
And again, and you've heard me say this before, over and over, and I'm speaking to my colleagues as well, this is a pretty good example of where we have an opportunity for somebody to come in here and to do something. And if we're not very careful, we will run this development off because of the cost included here. So, the, the street issue, it sounds like the water and the sewer issue might be workable with the owner, because I don't think anybody on this council would want to give money to the city and have escrow it if it's... have escrow it if it's two years or 20 years without some kind of agreement. So they would do an agreement on the side if we in fact do that tonight. That's, that's doable if the council in fact votes that direction.
If they put a note on the plat, for example, then it wouldn't cost the developer anything. He just put a, put a note on the plat and then we would approach.
So it's fair to say that really the only issue we have here tonight that seems to be somewhat of controversial issue is the street issue. And if the owner's here, I'd like to hear from the owner or the...
We'll get to that here in just a minute. We're, we'll talk about the right-of-way issue here in just a sec. Any other council members have questions for Scott regarding this? All right. If I could, Mr. Price, I see you back there peeking around the corner. Do you, would you like to come up and answer some questions regarding this from council?
While he's making his way up this way, I want to mention that one of the things about the right-of-way issue was the fire inspector and the city engineer both felt like it, as long as the property was, an easement through that property was accounted for during Phase One's development. So that when they ever do come up with Phase Two, then there would be that right-of-way area set aside so that Phase One would not require the road to be built. So there would be no out-of-pocket, but it would require some planning with right-of-way dedication for lots two and three of Phase One to allow for some future accessibility to lots four and five, just so you understand where we're going with this. Mr. Price, Councilman Tyra has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ask anything you need to.
Ms. Price, as, as I reviewed this when we got our packets, the three issues were the water main and the sewer main and then the street issue. I'd like to address the sewer main and the water main. Was there a conversation? Are you all in agreement with putting a note on the, on that information instead of doing the escrow? Is there, do you have an option besides escrow for?
Well, at the beginning, the developer just kind of came to a stalemate. He said he'd never heard of anything like this. And it couldn't be a stopping point for the sale. But I came to a planning and zoning meeting one night. It was a sole item on the agenda, planning and zoning. Knew nothing about it until it was brought out in public. And their consensus was that if they were having to do it, they wouldn't do it. They would, you know, if the, if the sewer and water line is at the corner of the property or crosses a property, that's different. To put up money and wait for any length of time? No, money's hard to get now. You can't take a hundred thousand bucks out of your pocket and give it to anybody and not get results.
So, so then I'd like to ask the question, Mr. Price. So we agree, or I agree with you in fact, about putting, with P&amp;Z, about putting money in escrow. So is that other option look like it's doable for you and the developer?
Well, I'm speaking for me as a regretful landowner, but in the developer's terms, they wouldn't mind doing an agreement that when it's there, it's usable. They don't want to pay for something they don't have or don't know when they're going to get.
Okay.
If it's there and they have to have it, I feel confident that they would pay not necessarily the figure of $50,000. It may not cost but $25,000 to go across there. They're willing to pay cost to get sewer and water, which they don't need, but it's going to be there.
That, that was one of my questions for you. You currently have a water and septic system on the property that can adequately support two structures on the property?
Yes, they, they can support a lot of structures. In fact, there's two water sources and plenty of room for septic. There's actually some unusable area for anything other than septic.
But at some point, we do anticipate some city growth and it's going to continue down 377. I don't think we're putting blinders on and thinking that far into the future. It could easily happen. We're seeing quite a bit of growth out that way. With that in mind though, we do anticipate some sort of development and some sort of extension of water and sewer services on the west side of town. And at that time, with a note on your plat, that's the only time it would come into effect would be once we start to build out that way. You, you understand that?
I think they would be satisfied with a note, that a note on the plat's just a note on the plat. I mean, it's got to be a contract that's enforceable. And I think they would be satisfied to have something on there. But they would like to see the services before they put up the money.
I, I think we're all in agreement on, on that aspect of it. Any other questions for Mr. Price regarding this?
Yes, as, as we're moving along here, Mr. Price, if we get this resolved, it sounded like that, that's something that I would definitely endorse and vote for as far as that note on the plat. But why is up there, Mayor? I had some questions about the easement. Do you want to get into that now?
Yes, we need to go ahead and address that as well. That's the final denial.
When I look at this, it, it looks like, and you're a, I understand that you do dirt work and understand roadways and that sort of thing. It looks like that there was requirement, at one point it was talked about, maybe still is, and I understand the mayor just talked about, hey, we're just talking about easement, not a roadway. Well, of course, when I look at that, I looked at the roadway and it was 60-foot wide commercial road. It's about 156 feet in length, very short road. And it dead ends at the back of those four and five. And I'm understanding that that four and five is not lots, not lots going on there. So I can see why you don't want to spend the money there. But I just heard the mayor talk about an easement. So I'd like, with that said, Mayor, ask Scott, is that what this is down to? Just a 60-foot wide easement?
It is a 60-foot wide dedication for a future public roadway that basically is a leave-out. And as the mayor mentioned, there's no cost occurrences right now expected from the developer in order to plat, final plat the first three lots for first phase. No, no cost encumbrances if that were the case. All they're asking for right now, they being city staff, city engineer, fire inspector, is that we do a little planning and basically do a leave-out for the, the public dedication for that roadway. And if, if under the event that they're satisfied that there's not intense development on lots four and five, or there's a reason to maybe abandon it or lessen it at that point in time, or they may need it based on, you know, there may be some petroleum storage back there that the fire inspector may want. But from their standpoint, it's just good planning to earmark it when there's no money, you know?
And that's good. And I'm glad you said it because if something never happened in four and five, or if it was something on a smaller scale that didn't need that 60-foot wide commercial, you're saying that could be used for other things or some other lesser road?
We'll look at it when Phase Two develops. But, but right now, the 60-foot wide is just for the, the open space dedication. Even the commercial road will probably have a 39 or 40-foot section in it, in the 60-foot right-of-way, if, if it's built for Phase Two.
The only other question I had then, there was a question, remember that we talked, and we've talked about this before, about we've used the word vacate. Could they vacate that property to the city? I mean, is that, explain that, kind of bring that into the picture for us.
Yeah, but basically, when we look at lots four and five and both the fire inspector and the city engineer are comfortable with the uses that are going in there, and they feel that they do not need a 60-foot right-of-way, then we could include that area in the plat and abandon and vacate it at that time. But again, from their standpoint, since it's a big question mark and there's no construction dollars on the table, it's just good planning to kind of carve that out and leave it open right now. And really not encumber that area with a building footprint because we can never acquire that if need be at a later point in time.
Mr. Price, I just, I'm going to make this simple. I've heard this from staff and I've heard from you. So that 60-foot easement with your building footprint, which you all want to do, you and the developer, you know, I'm up here sitting on this side, so it looks easy from here, but do you see where we're at on this?
I see where you're at, but I would really like to simplify something that nobody will listen to me about. And this started before there was ever any property spoke of being sold. Lot Five is not a portion of this. Lot Five goes with the tract of land in one Perkins Circle. It was cut off by the tower lease company. It's two-plus acres. It is not to be a portion of this subdivision. It goes with the property on Juan Perkins Court in the Briarwood subdivision. They have tried to blow it up and say they can't do this, can't do that. This is only staff talking. We have a council up here that's a governing body of this town and this community. That's to be a separate piece of property. It's not to be a part of this development. Lot Four, I own that because the other man won't buy it. All it needs is a 36-foot right-of-way dead-ended into it. It does not need sewer. It does not need water. It's a piece of cow pasture. That's all it is. Lot Five should not be a part of it. It has an access easement to it to get to the tower. It also has an access easement through Juan Perkins Circle. But it should not be a part of this.
Hang on just a second, Mr. Price. I want to look at your application. Scott, can you bring us to the application, please?
Sure. When a plat is brought forth for a public hearing, we have a requirement that the entire parent tract be included in, in the preliminary plat. I actually, for that very reason, bought a copy, bought a copy of the Briarwood edition and it just delineates those areas between the subject property and Juan Perkins Drive, which is not a dedicated public road. It's just a private drive in essence. There's no public access through Juan Perkins to those plat lots.
It needs no public access. It's a part of a property. It's got two commercial buildings on it.
With a private drive. But in essence, that parent tract is delineated by this particular preliminary plat and that's why it's included is because our subdivision ordinance requires the entire parent tract to be included.
And the parent tract is not just four and five, but it's also these areas outside of that four and five, is that correct?
Right. It includes all lot...
It includes the Jimmy D. Gibson portion, the Brazos Electric Co-op portion as well.
Correct. Now, Mr. Price did do a, a development plat, which is not the same as a recording plat for the wireless tower. I don't know if you recall, quite some time ago, we did do a wireless development plat.
Yes.
But in essence, all that is is a site plan. It doesn't create a legitimate lot of record to be developed. Only what's on that development plat can be developed. So he basically still has a piece of land and survey getting site plan approval for specified development on that development plat. So I think that's where the confusion is.
Any other questions, Mayor?
I wish the surveyor, he did, he made the first cut, to cut that two-plus acre tract off. And later on, the guy came wanting to buy something, so he combined them both. But honestly, this should have been a two-plus acre tract and a seven-plus something acre tract. He turned around and combined it and got this thing into a terrible mess. But the two-plus acre tract where the tower is, it's tied to the property at Juan Perkins Circle. It should have nothing to do with this subdivision because it's not ever going to be a part of it, ever.
Mr. Price, could I ask you a question?
I can hear you. I'll answer it.
All righty. Can you hear me?
Please.
Uh, Scott had said that this didn't cost any money to make this road 60-foot right now until you get ready to develop the back of it. And then they may even let it off. But does it cost you any money for its building? Could you make a bigger building if you had the 35 feet that you're asking for instead of the 60?
At this time, the man wants to buy lot one, two, and three. I have begged him to take four. He can find no use for it. He doesn't want it on taxes. I have no use for it. I don't want it. I've offered to give it to him. He won't take it. We have no intentions of developing it. But in the event that it developed, the same thing is going to happen. They're going to come right down here, the staff is going to tell them, "You can't do this, you can't do that." They're going to control everything you do on it. If it's got a 36-foot wide easement in there and they want to build a bomber plant in there, they're going to do like they've done my other properties, saying, "We don't want that there, you can't do that. You can only put something in there that you can use a 36-foot wide easement."
All right.
You know, "We don't, we don't need it. We don't want it."
All right. Let me, let me ask the staff something here. I was riding around this weekend a little bit going to Fort Worth and I noticed there's two locations on 377 going 40-foot worth that doesn't have a 60-foot wide around the building. And I'll tell you which one it was here was the, and I don't know the name of it, it's the one out there going by the cleaners. It's a two-story, looks like a apartment, but they're, they're business.
Mr. Allen, we need to get back to where we are here.
Well, that's where I'm at.
Uh, no, you're on 377, if I'm not mistaken.
That is, it's on 377, too.
You're, okay.
This is, this is the only property out there that's had this kind of requirements. The joining property to the west of it, there's an auto lot up there that was in ETJ. They didn't ask them to do anything. There's a bingo hall, there's a boat shop. They didn't, they didn't ask them to put up anything. They didn't, they didn't want to see anything.
But Mr. Price, they also didn't have a tract of land that would become landlocked once it's platted, and that's what's...
I don't have one, I don't have one that's going to become landlocked. I have Lot Five, it's a tract of land, it is tied in with...
So you're giving the city Lot Four?
Am I doing what?
Are you dedicating Lot Four to the city?
I won't give it to the city. I'll take money for it, but it needs a street dead-ended into it. If somebody wants to do something, they've got to come do this.
Well, and that's why we're talking about a right-of-way access through Lots Two and Three.
36-foot right-of-way right off that drive I've got. So all it needs dead ends into it.
Well, but based upon ordinance, that's where the 60-foot right-of-way, it's a 40-foot width of road, am I not right, Scott?
Well, I can, I can tell you...
And then you wind up having that easement on either side of the right-of-way.
I can tell you that y'all are the governing body that makes the rules and the laws, but the buyer will forget the deal. I mean, it'll just be a rocky cow pasture if y'all...
Mayor, I just have one more question.
...ain't bend a little bit because he needs not a 60-foot.
All right, Mr. Price, we've got, Mr. Allen, you, have you wrapped up yet? I'm going to let you wrap up.
Talk to him after council meeting. Thank you.
I just got one more question, Mr. Price, and thank you for coming up here. But you said something just now and I want to just clarify that. Are you saying that if this is not done the correct way, you could lose that buyer?
I'm not sure what the correct way is. I know what the buyer says he can afford and some things the city asks for, he can't afford.
Well, let me just say, it, it, my last, this is my last statement. I appreciate everything you said, but I'm going to apply, and I'm going to call on my colleagues to apply the common sense rule on this.
Common sense has worked real well in this because a dead-end road 36-foot wide into what they call a Lot Four, they're going to control anything that ever happens on it. Anybody comes down here and says, "I want a building," they're going to tell them what they can do and can't do. Look at 2550, 377 West. I've had that sold twice. I've got signed contracts. They bring it up here and they say, "We don't want that there."
Thank you, Mr. Price. Appreciate it. Anybody else from the public like to speak regarding this particular item? We're going to close the public hearing at this time.
Thank you.
All right, council members, what we have before us is a request for a preliminary plat for a 10.3367 acre tract of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots one through five, block one of the Harold Price Edition. Property located approximately 800 feet west of the intersection of highway 377 and Holmes Drive. As you have heard, it comes with a list of variances, many of which were approved by P&amp;Z and staff, but it did run into a snag on two conditional denials. One of the denials, P&amp;Z suggests placing a note on the plat. That's for items number 3.9 and 4.5 to not extend the eight-inch water line as well as the sewer main on section 3.9 and 4.6 by placing a plat, a note on the plat. The other item for denial was the request for right-of-way dedication through lots two and three to access lots four and five should they ever develop in the future. Entertain a motion to a conditional denial of the preliminary plat until said item or notes are placed.
Mayor, I have a motion that is different than yours.
All right, let's hear what your motion is.
Okay. I move that we approve the preliminary plat and that we put the note on the plat for the items one and two, which is eight-inch sewer main, eight-inch water main, and then the three, four, and five already have been approved. And then we approve the 35-foot area and not the 60-foot easement for six. So I'm asking to approve the plat with the approvals.
I, I just need to clarify something, Councilman, that this would still become a conditional denial. In other words, you, you can't do, finalize the preliminary plat until those items notations are made on the plat. plat until those items' notations are made on the plat, okay?
Yeah.
So it's a conditional denial that you're requesting?
So, so here's what, so are you saying that 1 and 2...
So I, I need you to clarify.
Are you saying that you're going to consider 1 and 2 conditional denial with the note on the plat, or would that be not a conditional denial? Because we, we talked about...
It's still a conditional denial until the note is placed onto the plat. Then he has met that requirement, okay? And, and then, if you put a conditional denial on the right-of-way, he's got to come up with some sort of a dedication of a right-of-way. You're saying a 35-foot right-of-way through lots 2 and 3?
I think it was originally 35 or 40, so what it, what it was originally, 40-foot, I believe, but it might be 35, as I'm reading this, I'm reading a lot of information.
I'm reading a 35 on...
Yeah, if I can... I think it's 35.
If I could defer your attention, it looks like a 36-foot access easement, as shown on the plat that was handed to you, through Lot 3, being necked down to a 15-foot access easement through Lot 4 to Lot 5, is what, is what is submitted to you by the applicant.
That's correct, because it, it keeps it at 36, coming in off the road to the property that he's going to be using, 1, 2, and 3, and then after that, it goes to that smaller area that, as well as we know, that access, if somebody's going to do something back there in the future, if that takes place, will come back before this council. So Mayor, I appreciate the conditional denial, I just want to make sure that that's the right wording for the, uh, for the variance, the last variance with the 36-foot frontage. And that's why I wanted to get the attorney to make sure that's correct.
Your wording is right, but I would remind you, you have an engineer, your staff, and the fire inspector all saying that you should dedicate a 60-foot right-of-way, so you just keep that in mind, you have those professionals telling you what you should do here. But your wording is correct.
The wording's correct, and again...
I'm thinking a motion.
Thank you. And, and just to help, because I know we're going to vote it, Mayor, uh, since there was a second, I'd like to lead off the discussion.
First off, let me see if I can repeat your motion. Your motion is to conditionally deny the preliminary plat, okay? This, I just want to make sure I'm, you're, we're all following, to conditional denial of the plat until said, uh, notes are placed on the plat for the variance to section 3.9 and 4.5, to not extend an 8-inch sewer main, along with a note about the variance on section 3.9 and 4.6, to not extend an 8-inch water main. And then, the final thing is to allow the variance, am I following this right? He's saying to allow a variance for a 35-foot...
36-foot.
36-foot...
Frontage.
Street frontage along a dedicated roadway, is that what I'm understanding you done to say?
It's 36-foot road coming in off 377, and I'm, and I'm using this along the same lines as...
And that would be a variance to section 3.5.
That's correct, and, and here's where the word on denial, or what you say conditional denial, I noticed when I read the notes in, in the packets, we approve the, um, actual, uh, preliminary plat with conditional denials on the variances, that's why I said it's what I did, because the conditional denials are actually on the variances. We approve the plat based upon three conditional denials, the two that you mentioned, and then the one with the 36-foot, uh...
In, in essence, you're understanding that correct.
Yeah, we're good.
But it's still a conditional denial until those notes are placed there.
Got you, okay, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could try to clarify...
Please, please, try to work with us about this section 3.5, though.
On 3.5, if what I'm hearing is correct, and what the applicant has submitted to you, if it's in line with what Councilman Tyra is trying to make a motion on, the 36-foot through Lot 3 and the 15 through Lot 4, then what is submitted is basically, uh, doesn't really require a denial, because they've submitted that to you. So if you're fine, you can basically, according to Councilman Tyra, make a recommendation, recommendation to approve the variance to 3.5, uh, based on the submitted plat by the applicant to you for review, if that's what you're, if that's what you're proposing to approve.
And, and to make sure that, where my council, uh, people can see it here, if you'll go to our packets, you'll see where it turns into a 24-access easement, he's got it drawn in blue, it, it, do you see, do you see that? So when you said 15, is it 24, or is it 15?
It's, that's, that's what the city's recommending here. This is what the applicant, the one, that I handed out to you, is what the applicant submitted to you.
Yeah. Yeah, there's ludicrous to build a road back there, I'm not, I don't want to see this gentleman required to build a road back there when there's nothing back there, there may never be anything back there. We're talking about an easement right now, and so, that's it, we're talking about easement. I'm saying, let's make it 36-foot like he's asked, okay? And, and approve it, and be done with it, okay? If in fact there's something that comes up in the future, that you think we have a problem, then we can always come back and get, get it done.
And I guess my question is whether or not you're comfortable with what was submitted to you, which was 36-foot through Lot 3, and then down to 15-foot access through Lot 4 to get to Lot 5.
So I'm, I think there's a compromise here, 36 going back to 3, and then 24 going back to 4, just as staff recommended, okay? You see the compromise? 36, and then it goes to 24 instead of 15, we're trying to work with folks here.
If that's, if we're not approving this as submitted, then we need to go back to a conditional denial.
Conditional denial, yes, yes. We need a conditional dial based on those three, and you've got the two laid out really well, the, the actual last one is 36-foot, and it, and past Lot 3, and getting to Lot 4 and 5, it's 24-access easement. So we're talking about two easements, 1 36, 1 24. Well, the fact is, this is just an easement, nothing's being built there, he, he said he was going to give the property away, it's very clear that nothing's happening on property number 4. 1, 2, and 3 is the issue here. So that, that's what I'm laying out to my colleagues, and we're going with the city on the 24-foot access past that, which, there's no plans to do anything, but we're saying 36 instead of 60.
Just as a sidebar comment, keep in mind, if they file this preliminary plat and get all these variances, they could file a final plat for, for Lot 4, showing that 24-foot access easement through Lot 4, and they've already gotten their variance approved, and they could, of course, we don't have land use review over what goes on that lot, it's outside the city.
In ETJ.
That's correct, why did, then, then if that's true, Scott, why did city say, "Let's do a 24 past 3," because that's what I just made a motion to. No, I want to, I want to hear from Scott, please. You're okay with 24, because that's what you in fact recommended.
That's what the city engineer and the fire inspector recommended, yeah.
That's correct, so I'm saying, let's keep it 36 coming off the highway to Lot 3, and 24 all the way to Lot 4, this is real simple, and I apologize if we've made it confusing. Mayor, does that help?
It's still a conditional denial, just so you understand.
Still a conditional, we're together, we're together.
I want to make sure the language is right, it's a conditional denial of this preliminary plat until said right-of-way is 35, 36 feet through lots, Lot 3 of Phase 1, and narrows down to a 24-foot wide right-of-way through Phase 2, Lot 4, and 5, is that correct, sir?
And let's, let's make it specific, it says...
I, I just want to be sure.
Hey, we're, we're going to do it by the book, it says 24-foot access easement with turnaround, not dedicated until final plat of lots 4 and 5.
I want to make sure we get the language right, it's, it's right-of-way or easement, those are two different things.
It says access easement.
Okay.
It's got to be access easement.
Yeah, let's, thank you, Mayor.
And, also for your clarification, Mr. Price, this means that you can't build a structure on lots, on Lot 3 in, within this easement right-of-way, and it, as you submitted it, just so you understand, it's the same as your pictorial view does. We're going to vote on this unless, uh, somebody else has some questions regarding this motion.
I didn't want to stir Mr. Price up, but the fact...
Well, I can't hear from Mr. Price at this point.
Good, thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry. Mr. Price, I, I can't hear from you at this point, sir.
I can hear better here.
Alright, so, at this time, uh, entertain, we've got a motion by Mr. Tyra to conditional denial of the preliminary plat as submitted, with a requirement of a note regarding the variance request on the water and sewer, and a conditional denial on the request for a variance regarding a 35-foot frontage access to a dedicated roadway, being a easement through the property 36 feet wide through Lot...
Access easement.
Access easement through Lot 3, 36 feet wide, narrowing down to a 24-foot wide access easement with a turnaround in lots 4 and 5. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Until said things are done, Mr. Price, on the notes are added, you can visit with Scott afterwards about what just came down.
I'm excited, I'm excited.
He'll be able to, uh, take this and send this to you.
His engineers in the office will send, send our standard note to the engineer for the plat.
Great, thank you. Moving us down to item number 4, considering a proven ordinance denying a rate increase request by Atmos Energy Corporation on or about January 31st, 2012. Uh, council members, I want to remind you that back in January, we heard from our law firm that's in, uh, that's representing ATM, that's, uh, all of us that are involved in a lawsuit with Atmos Energy regarding a rate increase. We now have met a deadline and have to submit whether or not we want to deny this, uh, rate increase through way of an ordinance. By passing this ordinance, we buy a little bit of more time for the residents here in Hood County, it allows the ATM group attorney, which is representing the city of Granbury, as well as many other cities that are served by Atmos Energy, a chance to basically oppose the rate increase and request a new evaluation by the Railroad Commission about whether or not the rate increase should go into effect immediately. If we fail to take action on this ordinance regarding denying the rate increase by June 11th, there will be an automatic rate increase on gas for all of our citizens within the city of Granbury, Texas. So with that being done, I would, I would entertain a motion at this time to approve said ordinance denying a rate increase request by Atmos Energy.
Mayor, can I clarify something?
Sure.
Um, as the council knows, uh, the city is served by Atmos natural gas, and I want to clarify that the city is not in a lawsuit with Atmos Gas.
I misspoke, I'm sorry.
It's a rate-making proceeding, is what it is. And basically what happened is Atmos went to the Railroad Commission and said they wanted to increase the rates that they charge their customers for natural gas all across Texas, and a group of cities, numerous cities over 30, joined together, and Granbury's one of those, to oppose the rate-making. It's not a lawsuit, in a traditional sense, all we're doing is, we are joined with the other cities just questioning the increase of Atmos' rates. The mayor is correct in that Atmos did, uh, issue their new rates, and you can see that in the packet material, and this is an ordinance that every city that is in the coalition has been asked to pass, many cities have, you may have seen that in the Star Telegram, Bedford, Ulysses, Hurst, I know have passed it, several others have as well. If, if the city of Granbury does not pass this ordinance opposing the rate increase, it does go into effect automatically as a matter of law next Monday. So we have to take action on it, and I just wanted to clarify the, uh, that it's a rate making proceeding.
Lawsuit, thanks. And, and one of the reasons that the ATM group felt like this may show some inflated dollar amounts, uh, based on the Atmos Energy, uh, rate increase proposal, they were citing several areas where they thought the amounts for like O&M expenses were inflated by some $5 million, depreciation by $6 million, a rate base by $190 million, return on investment was too high, according to their consultants, and that's why we have this before us. Once again, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve an ordinance denying a request of rate increase by Atmos Energy.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra, a second by Mr. Perkel. Any other discussion regarding it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Brings us down to item number 4, this is a discussion item only, no action is anticipated on this item. I'm sorry, item number 5, it's a discussion item only, no actions anticipated on this item, uh, we will discuss the status of the Opera House Improvement Project, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager McKethan.
Uh, yes, um, as the committee on, uh, Opera House Improvement has, uh, proceeded, we have, we were, had always scheduled to have various updates as we went along. Um, we've had an, an unusual, you know, we've gone through and, and, and had to go into even more detail as to our planning, and we're now probably, from the original, uh, schedule, we were between 2 and 3 weeks late in terms of some of the tasks scheduled for June 1st. Um, but we were working on it, we continued to work on a more detailed task plan, and we, that, that task plan, we have been comparing to the original schedule of being completed on November 30th. Uh, Brian Gaffin recently completed the project task on Monday, uh, where I actually sent you the email, where in fact, as he completed the detailed task, uh, it's going to take longer than we thought, and the, uh, projected date on that task list is now February 9th. We wanted to bring that forward to the city, uh, the city council, and discuss it, and, um, we've asked Brian to come forward and, and talk about the process, and I'd like to turn it over to Brian at this point, if we could.
Mayor, city manager, and council, um, that's basically, uh, what Wayne said is, uh, the case, we updated the task, uh, which is basically the comprehensive construction schedule, um, part of, uh, which means that we would begin construction on Ju- uh, July the 9th, uh, and there is a lot of, of work that needs to be done between now and July the 9th, not only on my part, but on the city's part as well. Um, the, the way that we got there essentially is, we're 3 to 4 weeks late on the, uh, through the architectural process because of change of scope of work, uh, and, uh, the construction schedule grew approximately 5 to 6 weeks, so you put those 2 together, and we end up with a 2 and 1/2 month, uh, extension. And, uh, we are complete with the plans, we are complete with the specifications, and, uh, we are prepared for the material suppliers and subcontractors to, uh, obtain that information via a website link, uh, as early as right now.
Well, um, I wanted to, uh, to talk about on the difference in the changes, though. Uh, the start of construction, at least the way I was analyzing it, was that we were going to be about a little over 2 weeks, around 2 weeks off at the start of construction from the previous, um, schedule, which was after the design, so most of the increase in the time is during the construction process. The 2 months is really related to the construction, uh, items, is that how you understand it?
Well, I think the last schedule that y'all had looked something like this. Alright, uh, the last date that was down there was 5/13 of 2012, which was the goal to have the construction documents, meaning the plans and specifications completed, uh, that was 5/13, and it's the 5th day of June, and we're complete with them. So, that's 3 weeks, that's a 3-week delta right there. Um, and so that, along with the construction, uh, the additional weeks in the construction schedule are what forces it to the, uh, 2nd week in February. February the 11th, and, uh, that's, that's in a perfect world, there's no contingency legislation with that whatsoever. That's writing bid packages, uh, potentially asking subcontractors, uh, to, to work every day as a consecutive calendar day, whether they have to, uh, plan on having multiple, uh, teams and shifts, uh, to allow them to comply with the proper laws in the state of Texas, labor laws, uh, but, uh, that's the way the bid packages are delivered currently. Every day is consecutive day, and I'm not even sure if that complies with the city ordinance that we usually work on Sundays, but that is the way the bid packages are delivered through all of them. We hold on.
Well, I think council does have some questions for you, Mr. Gaffin.
Sure, I can understand.
You know, we'll start off with Mr. Allen.
Thank you, sir. You know the laws of the state of Texas, don't you?
Oh, no, sir.
Oh, you don't?
No, sir.
Well, maybe we made a mistake here. You know, Brian, I talked to you the other day on the phone about a week ago. Do you remember that conversation?
Yes, sir.
And you told me you was running about two weeks, maybe three weeks behind. A little over 24 hours ago, I got an email from City Manager, then February the 9th, I think you just said February 11th. But regardless, and you're not sure it had happened then, what changes did you do to make it get that far behind?
Well, I think we just received that, Tony. But when we were having our conversation, we were talking specifically about the construction documents, which are the plans and specifications that get put together for the bid negotiation process as it takes place before you begin the construction process. So when you and I were talking, we were talking about the construction documents, which is the last item here, maybe 5/13.
I can't see that far over there, but I never said, "When are you going to get the drawings done, Brian?" I asked you, I said, "I'm getting some calls from citizens, want to know why it's sitting still." And you told me you were finishing up the deal. You said, my bad, you said, "I have them this week." I asked the City Manager, "Tonight, if we had them, we still ain't got them." Now, if that's wrong, I'm wrong, on the detailed drawings. If you're going to get the package out for bid, you said we'll go, it was ready. Is that correct?
Tony, you lost there a little bit.
Okay.
Whatever I told you back then, obviously, was incorrect. Okay? What is correct today is that we have plans and specifications that you can go online and you can pull those detailed plans up right now.
Okay. All right. Whenever you told us at the council meeting that we were trying to get you to commit to Thanksgiving, to the parade and everything, Christmas parade, and you said that you couldn't do that. And we were talking about in December. How do we go from those dates that you gave on it, I'll get that paper you got there, Brian, to February the 9th? If we was only two weeks behind, where did the other two months show up at?
Basically, it was a change in the scope of work, Tony. And I'm telling you right now that there is not an extra day in that schedule, okay?
Okay. But I asked you what the change of work was.
You asked me that right now? You're asking me what the change in the scope of work is?
What was the change to make it go to February?
Well, there have been numerous changes through the process from where we started in January. So, I mean, do you want me to like list those, or do you want me to read you one of the most significant changes?
I'm just shocked that we had a misunderstanding and I set blame for it on our phone conversation, that I thought you meant overall, you was going to be two and a half weeks, three weeks behind. And I never heard February mentioned until I got a copy of your email, City Manager, yesterday.
Okay.
And that's where I got confused.
Okay. Well, there's a difference between construction and construction documents. So I must have misunderstood that you meant, when are we going to be able to tie a bow around this and get a substantial completion approval from the city of Granbury and the staff and the building officials? But evidently, I thought you were just talking about construction documents. I didn't realize that you were talking about the overall comprehensive scope of work.
Evidently, the City Manager did too. Because he told me the same thing, that, you know, "We're only running about two and a half weeks behind, and maybe we catch it up." That's what Wayne told me. So I think he thought the same thing I did, Brian, and I'm sorry. But I heard you say the other day that Andrew had changed the, added fly rails to it, and you had to redesign it.
There's, you know, and that's part of, it's part of the multiple number of changes that have been done. And all those changes, Tony, that have been made, and all the decisions that have been made by the design team have been made for the betterment of the community of the city of Granbury and the cultural arts. And believe me, those decisions that were made by Andrew and his consulting team, those decisions that have been made by Terry Cohn and Wayne McKeon, and the meetings that we've had, have all been strictly in the best interest of the city of Granbury.
Boy, I don't doubt that a bit, Brian, didn't it? But the thing about the fly rails was mentioned the night that you came up and talked about, "You could do this, me and two or less." Fly rails was mentioned. The only change that I know about, and I went on any of those meetings, you know, Brian, I'm sure it was, was with the lighting, the LED lighting. Now, that's only two I heard. And the fly rails was mentioned today that you got the contract on it. And the lighting, unless you're going to move that light here over here or something, the drawing should be the same, except for maybe the gate to the wire.
Well, I wish that was true, Tony. But that's not the case. Lighting is extremely complex. As a matter of fact, the lighting changed last Tuesday. The lighting changed from the old lamp part system that is a high-energy consumption lamp, produces extremely a lot of heat. It was changed last week for the betterment of the community of the city of Granbury, so that the life cycle cost of the structure would be reduced considerably, not only from a lighting standpoint, but also from a mechanical standpoint, the air conditioning standpoint, the comfort of the people within the structure. So we had to take those into consideration. There is, there's not a finger to be pointed at anybody on that. It was the right decision to be made. It took that time through the evaluation process. That evaluation process was not my process. I had no control of that. You didn't grant me $250,000 to do the fly rail and the lighting and the sound.
But you already knew we was going to do it.
Tony, of course, we knew that we were going to do that in a year, but we did not know that Andrew was going to get $250,000 given to him until approximately six weeks ago. I don't know what the exact date is, because dates are a little bit superfluous. Goals are important, dates are superfluous, in my opinion. And with Andrew, he was given the money from the day that he got that dedicated from the city council. He began working diligently with his consulting team to try to evaluate who was the best person to help the city of Granbury achieve not only the fly rail system. There was never in my scope of work, okay? Because there wasn't a new stage in my scope of work, all right? There was never lighting in my scope of work, theatrical lighting in my scope of work. So he began to evaluate. He didn't have those guys sitting there in his office going, "We want that, you know, we want your job." I mean, he had several people saying, "We want that job. We want the lighting." You know, there were two or three of them. "We want the fly rail system." There were two or three of them. So Andrew had to evaluate those companies, see which ones of those were going to be the best for the city of Granbury. After that, they actually had to begin working with my consulting team to make sure that we designed a facility that was capable of handling the modifications that they were bringing in, which, yes, we knew they had to be there, Tony, but it's not like we can't put a conduit, one conduit up there and go, "Okay, guys, don't tap into that." You know, we had-
Well, I built a house before, Brian. I've done a little commercial work. But if I'm hearing you right, Mr. Combs, Mr. Andrews, has been on the city payroll, and they knew that we needed fly rails, even though the money wasn't there. And you're telling me they just came up about three weeks ago and said, "We've got to have these fly rails now"?
That's not a question for me to answer.
Okay. I'll ask them then.
Good.
Mayor, I have a few questions.
Okay. Now, I just want to remind you, this isn't a beat-up Brian thing. All we're trying to do is get some answers from-
Mayor, I've got, same as you, I've got a lot of taxpayers asking what's going on down there. I can't give them an answer until we ask them.
Well, we're going to get some more detail out of this before we're done.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tyra.
The good news is, I'm going to be a lot easier on you than my counterpart here. I feel his pain. And any elected official feels his pain, because we're getting phone calls saying, "Hey, there's nothing going on down there." So, you know, I understand how that works, and I see where these questions come from. But I was really appreciative of the staff. Staff got together and they showed the original construction dates, document dates, bid dates, and all that. And they gave us a comparison to what you just recently put out. And if you really look at it, there's not that big a gap there. And I'm just, because I want the audience to hear this, I want you to, you've seen it probably already, but like, construction document completed. The original date was May the 13th, and now it's moved to 6/1, okay? And I think that you got really close. You said they're done right now. The bid date was set for 5/29, and it's up to 6/17 now. We going to make that date? You know, it looks like we're going to make the 6/17 date?
As long as we continue moving forward.
Okay. So what I really looked at, what really got me excited here, the demolition of the back wall, start construction. The original date was always 6/30, okay? June the 30th. And now it looks like it's July the 9th. And I think that's from your latest stats. Is that correct?
Well, construction starts on July the 9th. The back wall will not be removed on July the 9th. There's too much work that needs to be done. There's 15 ton AC unit on the roof that needs to be removed, and I can go into the top of the details stuff that needs to be done before we actually have scaffolding set up to remove those stones and to salvage the stones.
Well, that's, okay, Brian, so let me help here, because that's important. I'm glad you said that. So, because it says demolition of back wall, it says 6/30 original, now it goes to 7/9. And what you're telling us, that it's a different date. So on that website that we can go to, we'll probably see the correct date on knocking out that back wall?
You will see a comprehensive schedule of construction, but you will not see the task that y'all have in front of you. You won't see that.
Okay.
And if that task says that I'm demoing the back wall on 7/9, then it is incorrect. I'd like to see one of your pieces of paper where it says that. I've got that on my computer, and I don't have my computer.
Because what we pull with this part of the structure, is that with the first construction on the old, on the old schedule.
On the old schedule.
And what you have is the more details, you're saying, you're talking about the air conditioning. And we said start of construction, and what's the start of construction, where the whole schedule, the first thing you're saying, before the, 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 the back wall, you know, the air conditioning stuff, the start of construction, but the back wall, it makes sense, specifically, I think, that's what we're doing.
At least that. But there is a date specific to that particular task. And if there's not one, then certainly we could extrapolate that from the date before and the correct task.
And Brian, my kind of summary question is going to be real simple, because, again, I feel Tony's pain, because I'm getting the same screams, and people calling my cellphones, and nothing's happening down there. You guys approved this. And listen, I've been involved enough projects to know that things get delayed, lots of options, and things go into play here. And you've brought those up with the fly rail, the LED lighting, and again, you know, the LED lighting, the fly rail, those things were always going to be there. Actually, the fly rail was always going to be there. We were going to have a first-class, top-notch. I heard all along, there was going to be some kind of construction, maybe more structural wall because of the fly rail. And it was my understanding, you had already got that, you had that understanding going in here with Andrew months ago. But bottom line is, we got an email yesterday, and that was really kind of the shock and awe for me it was, is that, you know, hey, maybe December for sure is what we've been here in, November, December, and now we're here in February. Does it look like that any of that can be made up during the construction? And listen, I hear you talk about these people working, you know, consecutive days and all that. And absolutely, from my point of view, I don't want to see anybody working on weekends, or especially Sundays, that's going to hurt our residents down there and our people who are in business. So I think we have to be very sensitive to that. That's my point of view, in my opinion. So with all that in consideration, if you had to nail it down to just a couple really big items that were talking points for us as we talk to people about the Opera House slowdown in construction or delay, how can we verbalize that? Because I need your help in that.
Well, I think the main thing is that there has been a modification of the scope of work associated with the Opera House. Are there any questions about that? Because I can go into a lot of detail about it.
You've got a long list on that, and I've heard some of it, so I'm with you.
Well, I mean, it's as simple as initially, the proposed back portion was going to be a simple structure without a fly rail, without a stage, without any additional lighting in that area, okay? There was, it was going to be approximately 5,000 square feet. It was, as, right after the first of the year, it was thought that it could possibly even have been a pre-engineered structure, okay? We are now at 7,613 square feet of additional square footage in the back. It has a stage, it has a fly rail system that's integral to the structural system. It's not an independent structural system like what is in the existing Opera House currently. Means that my structural engineer consultant and JR Clancy, Andrew, fly rail consultant, got together and they made a system that actually is integral into the structure of the building, the primary structural members of the building. When stuff like that happens, there has to be a total coordination between those two groups, and there has been. And we have brought that to completion as of today. With the modification from a 5,000-square-foot pre-engineered metal building to a 7,613-square-foot 12-inch-wide concrete masonry unit with steel structure that's capable of supporting a fly rail system with native Granbury limestone on the exterior that has been approved by the local Historic Commission and the state Historic Commission, that the property got replatted as of, maybe today the signature got put on the replat. You know, because there has not been a stone removed off the back wall, certainly does not mean that there has not been work being performed, not only by surveyors, but by city staff. Terry Johnson and his crew have been very diligent. The asbestos abatement went very, very smoothly. The lead-based paint abatement got taken care of very smoothly. So there is a litany of things that went on, but I think that, you know, the key point would be the scope of work that's been modified and the integration of three major systems, sound, lighting, and fly rail system have been integrated into the architecture of this particular structure.
Thank you, Brian. And the elephant in the room is, obviously, the taking that date out is, you know, you're going to give us, we're going to get a complete price, we still don't have that price yet. So I just want to turn to Wayne and say, have we, the council has not approved a contract on construction. Is that correct? That's correct? Okay. So we're getting there. All right. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir. And that will be something, obviously, that will require, you know, Stuart and I worked diligently over the course of the next couple of weeks to try to get that resolved, so we can get that to council as well.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else on council have any questions for Brian while we've got him up here?
Right, I've got a question or one statement. Now, do you see us, do you see us actually going forward with the dates that you've given us and being able maybe to make some ground and knock some days off of that, go back the other direction, maybe?
No, sir. In fact, I said just the opposite. I said there is not a date of waste in that construction schedule.
So we could be looking at even further dates?
There is not a date of waste in that construction schedule, meaning that if we got rain the day before we poured concrete, and we could not pour concrete, then it would shove that date back one day. Or possibly two, depending upon the magnitude of that, because we have carton forms that will be sitting in beams that will keep the expansive soils from pushing the beams up and cracking the wall and cracking the foundation. So it could be more complex than just one day. It could be that they have to remove the carton forms and actually re-stabilize the soil and actually put those back down. There is, that is my time schedule. I think that it would behoove me not to say that the day that we get substantial completion, completing construction, doesn't mean that Andrew throws on his costume and he has a performance there. So I think that there is going to be some amount of lag time between our completion time and construction, obviously, and the fine tuning of his performance quality, lighting, the fly rail system, curtains, et cetera, even though they will be in place, and working with his staff is going to be another challenge for him after that contract.
Any other questions? Anybody else? I've got to swing into my gear now. And that is that I believe we have an agreement for the design, architectural design. That's the only one we have in play right now. It doesn't give us any date deadline for that scope of work to be done. I'm hearing tonight that that scope of work is done. We actually have architectural blueprint of the project?
You can get online at gaffinarchitects backslash Opera House backslash, and you should be able to pull up- and you should be able to pull up. I have not done that yet, because I don't have a computer sitting here.
Gaffin Architects, or Architect?
Gaffin Architects, but they have backslash Opera House backslash, and you should be able to pull up the construction documents for the Opera House.
You have all our emails, just send that to us.
I'll check that out later.
Send it to Wayne.
I just wanted to make sure that we, we're on schedule with this. Now, we've covered some changes in the scope of work. We're through with any changes on the scope of work as far as you're aware? Is that correct?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. So, what we'll see on this website, we will actually see architectural renderings?
No.
Blueprints. What are we gonna see?
Renderings and blueprints are two different things.
Okay, what are we gonna see?
We're gonna see construction documents.
Okay.
And construction documents is, are the plans, the detailed plans that, and notes and details that it takes for the contractors, the subcontractors, that the various material suppliers to do adequate takeoffs and actually build the structure for the planned specifications.
Okay, now-
We'll not see the specifications on there today.
Okay. But are we at the point where you've already placed it out to the subs and asked the subs to get back with you with numbers?
No. I've placed it out to some subcontractors in order to get some preliminary numbers back, but I have not sent that to my primary subcontractors and material suppliers yet.
I'm just trying to get my head around where we are in the scope of this project.
Assume that they have, that none of them have seen that, because the three that I sent it out to, their scope of work has changed, at least two of those, their scope of work.
But you just stated that the scope of work is now through?
Oh, that's-
As far as no more changes, as far as you're aware, or the city is aware, or that Andrew Barris is aware?
Well, there will be changes, Mayor. There will be changes, just like everything else. There will be changes. This is a, this is a bid document set of construction documents, meaning that it is likely that those guys that look at this, or ladies that look at this, are going to come back and they're going to offer what we call value engineering recommendations to us, okay? And those value engineering recommendations are something that we as a team are going to have to look at and evaluate and determine whether or not we feel like that that's something that we would like to integrate into the plans and specifications through some type of an agenda or not.
Okay. Now, let's go to the builder side of this. I'm looking, we have not signed the construction agreement with Brian Gaffin Builder, or Construction Company.
That's correct.
So, until you hear back from these subs, we're not moving forward with that phase of this?
Well, it's-
Is that limiting you on whether or not you wanna sign off on a document before you've seen the dollar amount? Because we're talking 1.2 million. I don't think anybody talked over 1.2 million when we talked about this project, even though the scope of work has changed and we found some additional dollars for a fly rail, drapes, lighting, and sound. We're still on budget of 1.2 million. Have we already crested that budget dollar amount? Because I'm hearing rumor that we have exceeded that.
Oh, well, it's not rumor. You were at the meeting when we talked about it. The, yes, I mean, right now, we're going from two different things. We're going from, we're talking about timeframe, and we're talking about money. And those are the two things that obviously you guys are concerned with. The current cost estimate that I have, including professional service fees, according to the agreements that we have, we are at $1,321,539, okay? And that is based off of the few subcontractors or material suppliers that I've contacted for hard numbers. And I just said that one of those, their scope of work has been modified significantly, but then there's another one where their scope of work has been modified as well, due to the modifications that have been made recently since they've actually seen the final plans and specifications. It could change, their price could change again once they actually see how I'm requiring their accelerated construction schedule to be done, working seven days a week, as many hours as we basically deem that they need to work and have completed their tasks efficiently. But, the $1,321,539 is the current estimate, and that is likely, that is going to change continuously over the course of the next couple of weeks, as subcontractors and material suppliers begin to obtain the plans and specifications, and look at those, read those, and then they get their proposals back to me. So, right now, that puts us at a delta of $71,539 over, and, you know, I can't tell you if it's going to be more than that or less than that. I anticipate it's going to be more than that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
It is, the ninth first night, first of all, I apologize, but I mean, I had to get my phone rung off. They were a quarter of a million, I wasn't huge, though. But the question is, the ninth first night I heard, we went from a 5,000 building, 5,000 square foot building, to a 7,600 square foot building.
Tony, I've been trying to get the city council in a small meeting venue since the day that we stepped into our own team meetings. And here we are in a public forum, talking about the details of the contract, and talking about the details of the construction documents that have taken five months to complete.
I understand. Have you called me for a meeting?
I saw what?
Have you called me for, to get, put it on the agenda?
That's not my responsibility.
You said you've been trying to meet with the council?
That's not my responsibility.
Okay, I understand. Okay. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Combs a couple of questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gaffin.
Thank you. Appreciate the work.
Hello, Mr. Combs?
Yes, sir.
All right. You've been, you've been involved in this as long as Brian has, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What's your understanding why we're running so far behind?
I'm not sure I have a good answer for you, Mr. Allen. We've met numerous times through the process, and we've, every time we've met, we've discussed the schedule. And the schedule, in my mind, up until just the last couple, three weeks, has been November. And it changed when Mr. Gaffin produced this detailed construction schedule, which in our last meeting in Mr. McKeaton's office, I asked for that schedule, because before that, we really didn't have, we just had some generalized things.
So- What date was that, was you given, the last meeting?
Well, previously, it was like I say, in November. And this February 9th date has just come out in the last week or so.
We just got an email on yesterday, didn't we?
Yeah. First of all.
On the fly rails, and I'm not trying to point fingers at Brian, or Andrew, or anybody, but we discussed those in our meetings, when we were discussing the beginning of this thing. And how did that fall through the cracks? How did you miss it?
I don't know that it fell through the cracks. In my mind, we always had a fly rail system. We did not necessarily know the precise details, the precise number of fly rails. That evolved over time, and I think that was, pardon if I'm wrong, Andrew, a function of money. There was a very specific amount that was available, or the cost for each one. And of course, they have a weight consideration to them, so if we had three or five, it's just one thing in terms of the structure, and I think we've ended up with 21 or something like that. Obviously, there's a lot more weight to the structure. There was never any question, I think, that they were gonna be there. It was just, how were they detailed, and how much did they weigh?
We, you know, you get paid regardless, and Andrew gets paid by the month, as a citizen. But here we are, for five months, knowing all this, and I can understand Brian's complaint there, you know, that he never got this stuff until three weeks ago, four weeks ago. And that's wrong, Andrew, you can go up there and talk about it. I mean, I'm a councilman, but I'm also a citizen. And people, some people wanted the Opera House, some people didn't. We went through holy heck up here, over that thing. And it looks like now, if we're not careful, and don't stay on top of it, we won't be open until this time next year. And I don't know what we gotta do to straighten it out or get it going, but, I mean, something's gotta be done. I'm speaking for myself, and I'm the councilman, something we can do up here, bring it before us, and just get it going, get it rolling. Thank you.
Well, as I said, this was more of a discussion topic, so, any more discussion regarding this from the council? Gonna bring up item number six at this time, consider and approve closing sections of Bridge and Crockett Street in the one-block areas surrounding the Hood County Courthouse Historic Square. Okay. From 5:00 PM Thursday, July 12th, 2012, through to 11:45 PM Friday, July 13th of 2012. Council members, we have a request from a radio station called, known as 105.3 The Fan. They've actually selected Granberry to be a host city for a Friday hometown takeover, in which they will actually broadcast live from several and various venue locations, as well as anticipate holding a festival-type concert there at the square, and as such, they are requesting a street closure for that. Entertain a motion to approve the closing of Bridge and Crockett Streets in consideration of this event taking place.
Make the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, and need a second, please. We have a second by Mr. Perkel. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor of approved?
Uh-
I'm sorry?
Uh-
Oh, yes, sir.
What is going on on Bridge Street? His letter didn't talk about that at all, or?
Well-
I mean, it's, who's coordinating this?
This will-
Director, or who's coordinating this fan station?
No. It's the radio station, 105.3 The Fan is going to put together some sort of a concert.
I understand that point.
They're planning on putting together a concert on our square. Yeah.
Is this the city, is the city going to be a part of putting it together, this radio station, or how's this working?
Well, they're coordinating any kind of city needs through our communications director.
We've already met with the county judge, he's taking it forward to get permission for them to be in the north community, or the park line. He's gonna take it to the county. And, uh-
I need you to talk into your microphone.
Oh, we've, we've already met with the county judge, and he's getting permission from the county commissioners for them to set up over near the gazebo in the back. They're gonna have a band, they're gonna be actually broadcasting across the Metroplex from there. They'll have, they'll have a cowboy, or they said they're gonna try to have cowboy trailers with a lot of the, you know, sort of like a museum of cowboys, which they have, they have cowboy, and-
They're a sports radio talk station.
They're a sports radio, that's what they are. But they're also gonna have some musical, I believe, Shannon, there's got some musical-
We're talking the Dallas Cowboys here, not just the Cowboys.
Yeah, Dallas Cowboys. But they are known as a very large sports talk show type of-
If I could call upon Shannon to come up here. Shannon, you've actually talked with the people from the radio station as well. Can you give them a little bit of insight as to what you know about the event?
Sure, no problem. The reason they're asking for the street closure is they would like to bring in their own vendors, whether that's food, whether that's more of a concert-type setting, bands. Since they're a sports station, primarily focusing on the sports, they would also, they're looking into contacting a lot of the Metroplex sports teams, such as the Dallas Cowboys, Dallas Stars, Texas Rangers, and seeing what type of support that they can get as far as vendors and participation is there from them as well. So, they haven't finalized all of the details, but they're working towards that. And so, also some live music as well.
Well, I was a little confused, and Mickey brought it up, and then the mayor said that as well, because 105.5 is complete sports radio.
105.3?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and so that, so this is all talk, if you listen to 105.3, and some of it is pretty on the edge.
Mm-hmm.
If you're listening to 105.3, or you listen to, they talk pretty, I mean, they get out there sometimes, running down people, down sports, it's all surrounded by sports.
Right.
I guess, when you say cowboy paraphernalia, we're talking about Dallas cowboy paraphernalia, football paraphernalia.
Dallas Cowboys, the Dallas Cowboy trailer.
Cowboy trailer, okay, good.
That's correct.
And so-
That's what they've requested.
So, here's where I'm, I guess, is this a misprint, or is it, it says it's gonna be closed at 5:00 that evening on Thursday, and then you wanna keep it closed all the way Thursday night, Friday morning, all the way to Friday, Friday night, 11:45 PM? Is that right?
That's what the station has asked. They've, they'd like for that evening to bring everything in, set it up, get all of the vendors going, because they, actually, the, from my understanding, afternoon to evening broadcast will actually begin around 2:00 PM. So, they'd like to kind of kick that off, and then go into the evening hours. That's correct.
They're a very popular radio station in the Metroplex. They're huge. People, you know, sports folks are all over them.
Mm-hmm.
I can't imagine them, they're coming here, Dallas Cowboy stuff, it could be a big deal.
Right. They had contacted the city, you know, and several other smaller cities as well, just to kind of extend their reach out from the heart of the Metroplex, so, that's correct.
And they're gonna be inviting people to come to listen to their talk shows here in Granberry.
Mm-hmm. That's our understanding.
They're trying to attract their own, their own listeners.
They're gonna be speaking about the event, I mean, pending the street closure and approval, but they'll be speaking about the event, you know, prior to having it, so that they can attract people down here. It'll be for the locals, but, you know, for the Metroplex audience as well, and their listenership.
Have we started coordinating that with HGMA and the merchants and the bed and breakfast and the people around the community, or how, we've-
We have not-
What's going on yet or not?
We have not been, actually, from the station standpoint, they wanted to get everything finalized and approved before we've allowed to, you know, then move forward to promote that event.
One thing you said, Mayor, I just wanted to ask about this. They're gonna control the vendors, they're gonna say who comes and goes.
Right.
So, what could be the gamut there? Okay, food, entertainment, I mean, how far does it go? What else? Maybe somebody selling goods, sports goods, you know, baseball caps, you know?
To clarify that, they have to still go through the city's permit.
That's-
So, we have to-
Approve it.
-see a permit, and that must be approved. We haven't got there yet.
That's correct. Right. We're just at the street closure portion of it, to see if we can even go forward with the event. And then from there, then we will get a permit, just like any other festival or event-type setting, and then that will go through all of the department heads, myself, and then the event coordinator with the station will be running all of the vendors, and, I mean, that way it's not too far out there, so they'll be running all of that through us.
And at that point, we'll know if there's a stage, we'll know if, uh-
What their needs are.
What exactly-
Stage, barricades, everything that's-
Everything that's in a standard festival-
That's correct.
...format.
Shannon, have they, have they done one of these before in a small year here?
They have. They actually, they have several lined up for the entire summer, and I think they actually kicked a lot of these off in May, is my understanding, so they've already been through a few of them.
So, we have any feedback on how they came about, or how this turned out?
I can certainly get that.
That'd be great.
When I was talking to Matt, he told me we want a contest.
We want a contest?
In terms of viewers voting, where they'd like to go. Now, just so you know, they'll be here that morning, and the morning talk show will be presented at a restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
And then the lunch show will also be presented at a restaurant. It's an all-day affair.
That's correct.
It's just the evening that's gonna be at the, at the square.
That's correct, yes. They'll do actually three broadcasts from Granberry all day on Friday the 13th, so.
They need Mickey to perform.
All right. So, what we have before us, we have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, a second by Mr. Perkel, to approve the closing of Bridge and Crockett Streets for Thursday, July 12th, 2012, at 5:00 PM, through till Friday, July 13th, 2012, at 11:45 PM. Any other discussion regarding that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number seven, discuss and consider tourism advisory board appointments. At our March 20th, 2012 city council meeting, the council amended the code of ordinance regarding the tourism advisory board and addressed the role, responsibilities, powers, and duties of that board. The council also approved the removal of all current members of the tourism advisory board and allowed for re-application to said board. Council members, what we have before us is we have a list of- Council members, what we have before us is, we have a list of applicants, and we have a few that were appointed by their representative chairs, shall we say. The Chamber of Commerce has suggested Sandra Walton as their nomination to represent the Chamber of Commerce. HGMA has suggested Scott Young. The Bed and Breakfast Association has recommended Kay Woszuluski. Hood County Development District has appointed Ona Pruitt. And, we had only one hotelier, and that was Dutch Wilkinson, so we have a seat for a hotelier, with him being the only one. I would recommend at this time that we entertain a motion to appoint said individuals that I just gave to the tourism advisory board to fill those five seats.
So moved.
So moved. I'll take that from Mickey Parson. I need a second. Second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion? All in favor of appointing Sandra Walton, Scott Young, Kay Woszuluski, Ona Pruitt, and Dutch Wilkinson to the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. This time, we'll take a vote on the four remaining positions. Council member, this is something totally new for us, we've got some voting software. If you'll look at your screen, you'll see that we've got the entertainment, local attraction candidates up on the screen. If you would, please, at this time, press a button, one or two, for your choice. We've gotten four, we've gotten five. This time, we're going to give you a little bit, it's time to decide to change your vote if you want to. When it reaches that zero point, votes are cast. Let's go to the screen and see who they selected. Tracy Hartman wins that position. So, at this time, entertain a motion to nominate Tracy Hartman to fill the entertainment seat.
So moved.
Mickey Parson makes the motion, need a second.
Take it.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to historic preservation and museum candidates. Once again, we've got two candidates up for office, please place your vote, one or two. We've got all votes in. You've got a few minutes to make a change, if you care to do so. A few seconds, I should say. And the votes are in, and it looks like Diane Locke is going to be the nominee, so entertain a motion to nominate Diane Locke to fill that seat.
So moved.
Give that to Mr. Perkel. Need a second, please.
Take it.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Diane Locke has been appointed for the historic seat. Moving on to restaurant candidates, we have two, once again. And at this time, please enter a one or a two on your little remote control. We've got four of you, need one more, please. Try it again, whoever you might be. There it is. And we've got 10 seconds. You can change your vote while this is counting down, if you decide to. All votes are tallied. Looks like Kay Colerain will serve as the restaurant seat on that, if we nominate her. So, I need to entertain a motion to nominate Kay Colerain to that.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, and a second from Mr. Perkel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Now, this is bringing us to our member-at-large seat. Council members, I do want to mention at this time that the EDC chose not to suggest a representative, so whoever remains out of the at-large list is going to wind up being our list of nominations, or applicants for the EDC seat, so we can fill all 10 of these seats. This time, please enter a number, one through seven.
This is for...
This is for the member-at-large seat. I've got them all in. Any last-minute changes, this is where it happens. Looks like overwhelmingly, it's Larry Cox will serve as the member-at-large. If we so nominate, entertain a motion to nominate Larry Cox.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, second.
Take it.
Is that Mr. Parson that gave the second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That's Mr. Cox will serve on that. Now then, if you can take his name out of the list, we'll look at this one more time. At this time, you're going to see a list of nine candidates. We need to put in, is that correct? No, that's... There is only, Tony?
Tony, too.
Tony.
Vote for it.
Nice try to get in on this board, sir.
I agree.
That's one way of getting in.
Maybe it's several times.
All right. So, let me know when you're ready, sir. All right. So, what we have here is the Economic Development Board seat. We'll fill it at this time with one of these six candidates, so if you would, please select one through six on your remote. One more. Try it again, whoever you may be. Looks like Blake Barker is who you've selected as your main choice, so entertain a motion to select, to nominate Blake Barker to serve on the Economic Development Board seat.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parson, need a second. Second by Mr. Tyra. All in favor of Blake Barker serving on the seat, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Now then, one last thing that has been determined according to the ordinance, is we should select a chairperson. I would like to just suggest that Larry Cox, who has previously served in the city of Arlington, and he's been a regular attendee of the previous tourism advisory board, might serve us very well as the chairperson for this, but you do have the option of voting. We're going to need to take a little bit of time to put in everybody's name. I think he'll be eliminated. But, as I said, Larry has served us very well on the previous board, he's been there, present at every board meeting that I can recall attending, and he has quite a bit of experience with the city of Arlington, previously serving with them on tourism. If you'd like to, I'd entertain a motion to nominate him without even going through the voting process.
I think we're voting, some people can go over, they want to see how you want to vote. I think we need to do that, so everybody can see that.
He's the president of the Historic Granbury Merchants Association.
I agree with you, but if we raise hands...
We can do it, we can do it through a nomination, I just need a nomination.
I like the software, that way, it'll...
If you like the gadgetry, we can stick with it, as long as we get all the names in here, right. Do you feel like you've got them all, Tony? Your 10 button is your zero button, just so you know. All right. You could set the slide up for us. Yeah, that looks good. So, at this time, we've got the chairman of the tourism advisory board slide up, so if you would, please select a one through 10, and a reminder, zero is your 10 button. We have all five responses in. And looks like Larry Cox.
I didn't like your bet.
Well, I appreciate that. And, so I'll entertain a motion to nominate Larry Cox as the chairperson, please.
So moved.
Take it.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra, second by Mr. Perkel. All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. At this time, I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, and that all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of the Texas Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney, as well as section 551.072, real property matters. We shall be back shortly. All right. At this time, we're going to reconvene into open session, there being no action taken back in executive session. Do I have anything that the council wants to bring forward at this moment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to negotiate through the first meeting in July, the possible extension and paving of the parking lot of the discussed property, and at that meeting, if we don't have something moving forward, we can make another decision.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the city manager to continue some discussions regarding the property located on North Houston Street. Any further discussion regarding that? We have a...
What date will that be?
That would be the first meeting in July.
Third?
Third.
Which, I will be out of...
Let's make it the next meeting, if it gets approved.
Leave your checkbook. Well, we'll know by then, though, Laurel, because we, we'll know by then.
Hang on, because he's requesting an amendment to the motion. The motion actually sets a date of July the 3rd, so...
Let's make it the last meeting in June.
I need that to come from the person who made the motion, which was Mr. Parson. Mr. Parson, do you want to amend your motion to the second meeting in July?
So, we're looking at, we're on 5th, that would be the 19th.
I show it as the 17th, sir.
I mean, the next meeting would be the 19th of June.
Yes.
And then, will we, in July, will we have a second meeting? Because we have our retreat on the 18th and the 19th. Or will you be here for that, Laurel, on the 18th and 19th?
I'll be back to the 16th.
All right. Then I will amend that a motion till June 19th.
Can I second that amendment?
All right. So, we have a motion to allow the city manager to discuss the property matter with the owner, and report back to council on June 19th. All in favor, please say aye.
Mayor, I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know we had any questions, but...
You didn't ask me.
I didn't ask this time, I thought we were moving forward, but...
Okay.
All right.
First of all, this motion is not to spend any money to get this done, it's got to be brought back before the council, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And secondly, do we have any amount of money we're going to talk about in this motion that these two council made, to give the city manager what to spend?
I would sure hope that we don't do that, because he needs to have negotiation power without putting a number out there. We've talked in executive session about certain things, and we came out and made a motion to give him authority to have conversations, gentlemen. He'll have to come back, Tony, and bring anything that's talked about, any figures, and there'll be a decision made one way or the other at the next council meeting, period.
Okay, but I...
No dollar amount.
I thought we'd already made them some options.
No dollar amount has been mentioned.
Okay, I'm against it.
Well, we haven't got to the vote just yet, you'll be able to do that. Any other questions regarding this motion? All in favor of allowing the city manager to continue negotiations with the owner of the property, and report back to council on June 19th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please make a note for the record that we do have one nay, and that was from Mr. Allen. That motion passes. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.